Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hingham Board of Selectmen's meeting for Thursday, October 10th. Our main focus this evening will be to conduct interviews for a vacancy that we have in the Police Department. This vacancy arises as a result of our effort to repopulate the police to the staff that they experienced prior to the financial crisis. So we have four candidates that will be introduced by our Police Chief this evening. The second part of our agenda will deal with a continuing discussion on selectmen goals and objectives, and then we'd like to share with you some work that the staff has done on our license fees. And then we will have selectmen and town administrator reports and return to executive session for the purpose of discussing contract negotiations concerning both the town accountant and the Police Chief. So, if any other questions with that, I'll introduce our Chief of Police, Michael Perino, and if you have any opening comments, Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight's interviews is for an opening for one patrolman position, and this is, as you've noted in your opening remarks, to bring us back to the staffing we had before the economic crunch. The position that we're going to be filling is to reinstate our safety officer back into the schools, which is a position we held for since I've been on the Police Department. We lost it during the budget crisis. So, we're going to start with the interviews.
Okay. Mike, and our intent is, just so the public understands, that we will try to get the selected officer into training sometime in the spring. Is that correct?
Yes, this would be the contingent of the academy for the spring.
Okay.
Because there are no academies between now and the spring. But we would be able to put the safety officer into the school.
For next fall.
No, next week.
Yeah, really? Okay, good.
Yes, we're doing the interviews with Dr. Gallo next week.
Oh, great. Terrific. That's good. Okay. Thank you.
This is our candidate, James Brady.
Nice to meet you, sir. How are you?
James, would you like to come on over?
Sure.
And I'll introduce you to the other members of the board. This is Paul Healy.
How are you, James Brady?
Pleased to meet you, Paul Healy.
Irma Lawler.
James Brady, nice to meet you.
Mr. Buffalo, welcome.
Nice to meet you.
Now, I want you to be aware, this is not the Inquisition or anything like this.
I appreciate that.
No racks, you see them not here. This is our effort to get to know you and an opportunity for you to introduce yourself as a candidate to the people in the town.
Absolutely.
We have some questions we'll ask that we will ask of all of the candidates. But perhaps you'd like to just tell us a little bit about yourself in a few minutes and before we get to the questioning phase, so if you would.
Sure. Well, I'm James Brady. I was born and raised in Hingham, Massachusetts. After graduating high school, Hingham High School, in 2006, I went on to Bridgewater State University where I finished with my bachelor's degree in criminal justice. I definitely believe I'm an individual of integrity. That was something that was instilled in me by both my parents as soon as I was old enough to even understand the concept of it. I also believe that I'm someone who's willing to go above and beyond for my job and dedicated to my work, and I consider myself a team player. I've been lucky enough to be in a position in my few short months as a patrolman down in Pilgrim Nuclear Power Station, to be recognized for those traits twice, so I want to continue that.
Oh, good. Okay, well, thank you for that. Mr. Healy, would you like to start with the questions, if you would?
I looked at your resume prior to coming in here tonight, and I'm continuing to look through the packet of information that you sent. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
And I must commend you. It's impressive. I was a former police officer in the town of Hingham. I wore the uniform that you aspired to wear, so this is near and dear to me. I've told my colleagues previously that I think this is perhaps one of the most important decisions that I make as a selectman, so I guess my first question to you, sir, is what is your bright line with respect to your own internal code of conduct, independent of anything else that may be imposed upon you?
Well, first and foremost, I believe that the morals of my parents instilled in me: integrity, honesty, discipline, and dedication. That's what I always tried to abide by. So with that being said, regardless of maybe any outside influences, regardless of what they be, I try and adhere to that code.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Irma?
In your opinion, what is the most important aspect of community policing in our community?
Well, I believe the most important aspect of community policing is not only to represent yourself as a police officer in the community with integrity, because once you lose that, especially in this position of law enforcement, it's tough to get anything done as a police officer. But as far as community policing, I believe the Chief himself said it best in his message to the community that we are a police department that prides ourselves in our ability to fashion service delivery effectively to the community. We are community committed. So I believe being community committed in terms of not just interacting with the community when called to service, but taking that extra time to step out of maybe the car and introduce yourselves to the community, reach a first-name basis with a lot of the members, let them know that on and off duty, you will be a role model in the community and a figure that they can look to.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can you describe for us what is the most difficult position or situation that you've ever faced? There's no right answer to that. We're just...
Sure.
And how you dealt with it.
Sure. Up until this point, I believe, a few months ago, I was on routine patrol doing a vital tour of the area where I worked on a Pilgrim Nuclear Power Station, and I came across two individuals who I could tell weren't employees. So I approached the two individuals as in the vehicle. So as I pulled up to the two individuals, I first, obviously wasn't sure what they were there for, they might have just been lost, so I calmly asked what they were doing, if they knew where they were. They claimed they were not aware, that they were just down there by the ocean taking pictures of the scenery. What they weren't aware of was the fact that any photographic device is illegal on the property because it is Federal Reserve, and there's a lot of classified information. So I asked them kindly if they'd mind if I looked through the photographs. So I did, and in looking through the photographs, I discovered that they did have pictures of our defensive positions and a picture of the nuclear reactor, the building itself. So right then and there, I knew something was off. So what I did is I asked the individuals to step over to the side. I just had to relay the information. They weren't in trouble at the moment, knowing there were a couple of individuals and just me out there. I felt a little uncomfortable, and I effectively worked with our dispatch station to communicate to them what was going on, still make the individuals feel comfortable, and Plymouth Police responded, explained to them what was going on, and they were subsequently arrested for what they had done. And I was asked to write a report that I knew was going to be submitted to the FBI, the NRC, the state police, and a couple other of the federal agencies, so it's definitely a difficult task to be able to handle that pressure and submitting a report that I knew was going to be able to explain to them what they needed to know, but also not forget any other details that might not incriminate the individuals if they weren't up to anything suspicious and just didn't know where they were.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you for that. Mr. Healy?
My turn again. I could work on that.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
How would you like to be remembered as a Hingham Police Officer?
I'd definitely like to remember not only as a police officer who responded when called to service and did what was necessary, but as a member of the community as well, outside of wearing the uniform. I was born and raised in this town. I love this town. I'd love to continue to live in this town and even raise a family in this town. So, not only as a Hingham Police Officer, but I'd also like to be recognized as an individual who's a part of the community, volunteered with the community.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Irma?
How would you rate your communication skills and what have you done to improve them?
Sure. I'd definitely say I still have a lot of room for improvement in my communication skills. I think I've gotten a lot better, having a few jobs in the past where I've had to work with the public in, as far as dispatching, when I dispatched to the Norfolk Police Department, that was pretty important, what I'm doing now. But to improve them, I knew going into college that my communication skills needed some work, so I enrolled in a few communication classes where I knew that we would be having to make public speeches a few times during the semester, so I kind of forced myself to either overcome it or at least improve, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. You described to us earlier a difficult situation you were in. How do you deal with stressful situations? Do you have any techniques or approaches that you find helpful?
Absolutely. I always kind of keep the phrase in the back of my head that "slow is smooth, smooth is fast," and when I remember that, it kind of helps me slow down a little bit, process my thoughts, understand that it is okay to take a second or two to collect your thoughts.
Good. Thank you for that. Mr. Healy, would you?
What traits have you observed in police officers that you don't plan to emulate or adopt yourself?
That's a tough one.
I got a hard one.
Yeah. Put me in a tough position.
Wrong answer, Mike.
Well, some traits I have noticed in the past is officers who kind of tend to become complacent or not situationally aware, and what I mean by that is maybe you'll see an officer at a traffic stop, and their body language or their position may be putting them in a position to set them off for failure, or if someone were to make a hostile gesture, they might not be able to react in time, so I've definitely noticed that. I've also noticed when communicating with the public, some officers I've seen showing a general lack of interest, and that's definitely something that I think you always need to be aware of, because as a community police officer, the public is your best friend and your greatest ally. That's your greatest resource, so without them on your side, it's going to make life a lot tougher.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Ms. Lawler?
If you could describe yourself in three words, what would they be?
As I previously mentioned, I have to say I'm an individual of integrity, self-discipline, and someone who's always willing to go above and beyond, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good. Okay. What made you interested in police work? And how do you feel this will help your overall career? What attracted you to this?
Well, I definitely became interested in police work at a very young age. I believe I was in first grade, and my brother had suffered a traumatic event. I actually noted it in the cover letter there, and he'd actually had his oxygen supply cut off when we were younger, playing in the front yard, and he was pronounced legally dead, and it was the first responders, the police officers and the firefighters, who I strongly remember coming through the front door, taking my brother from my father and responding to their call of duty without hesitation. And I saw that, and at that age, that's what I began to emulate, knew that's what I always wanted to do. Now, at 25 years old, I also understand that being a police officer, inherently, you're going to be a role model in the community on and off duty. You're also going to be a high-visibility figure. Having already worked at the Recreation Department, coaching youth sports in the town of Hingham, establishing relationships with members of the town who have lived in the town longer than I've even been alive, I'd like to continue that work, so.
Very good. Do you have anything you'd like to add that you haven't had an opportunity either for us to ask you or that you'd like to make sure we consider in our deliberation?
I just want to thank the board, the Chief, and the Deputy Chief for the opportunity. I also want you to know, if I was selected, I will continue to already master the traits that I already have, continue to adopt more and grow, and if I weren't to be selected, then I will leave here with a tremendous learning experience. I'll continue to garner my traits, again, continue to gather more, and look forward to the opportunity to be back.
Well, thank you.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thanks, sir. Nice job.
Thanks, sir.
Very nice job. Very good.
Pleasure to meet you.
Thank you.
This is going to be a tough one.
This is Anthony Cuddy.
Good morning.
Hi there. Nice to meet you.
Sure.
Nice to meet you.
This is an informal gathering. There are no right answers. This is an opportunity for you to introduce yourself to the town and for us to ask you some, we hope, not too difficult questions, that you get an opportunity to express yourself. If there's any opening comments you'd like to make, just so we know a little bit more about you, Anthony?
Sure.
That would be great.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you.
So, proceed.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me here. I know you guys have busy schedules outside of Town Hall and whatnot. My name is Anthony Cuddy. I'm 34 years old. I grew up in Boston, fell to Boston, my family, as a little kid, and then moved to Quincy, eventually marrying my beautiful wife and buying a house here in Hingham approximately five years ago. I now have a two-year-old little girl and working towards finishing my degree in criminal justice. Right now, well, again, in the January bunker hill, and moving on to either Northeastern or UMass for my bachelor's.
Very good. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Healy. Paul?
Mr. Cuddy, we're constrained to ask the same questions of each candidate, so I'll be consistent.
Sure.
I once wore the uniform that you wished to put on, so I have a particular interest in this position. My first question to you, sir, is what is your bright line with respect to your own internal code of conduct, independent of any kind of constrictions that are imposed on you by law?
I owe myself to a very high degree. One, first and foremost, is honesty, and I know that probably is the answer you've heard from everyone. By that, though, I mean honesty is everything to me. I have my name. My last name is the one thing you have from birth to death, and I can't tell you how much it's important to me to uphold that in the best I can, meaning I have strong beliefs of education, being honest, carry myself in a professional, adult manner. You lead by example, whether I'm in the uniform or out of the uniform. My neighbors, my peers, well, my siblings are older than me, my nieces and nephews, they see that, and I think that it's very important to... There's no facade with me. This is who I am. I don't trick or go things. I'll tell you exactly like it is, and if there's something I don't know, I'm candid in saying, "I don't know. Let me find out." That's... I kind of live by that golden rule.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Irma?
Thank you for applying.
Thank you very much. Thank you for having me.
In your opinion, what is the most important aspect of community policing in our community?
First and foremost, I think you need to be knowledgeable of the programs in which we have population. I know Hingham's approximately 20,000 residents, approximate. I think in order to be effective, you need another program. Hingham Police has the Designated Driver Program where they've established a rapport, coordinated efforts with local restaurants, where if, hypothetically speaking, if my wife and I are out to dinner, one can designate to the designated driver, he or she can drink for free, I'm sorry, can drink non-alcoholic drinks for the evening and go home safe and sound. Also, they have along a fixed, if you look at the passenger side, I believe, of the crews', you know, call if you see impaired drivers, another thing where, you know, hopefully teenagers with mom and dad who are there out in the bow can see that, and they can reach out to the community. They also have a DARE program, which is long been a program throughout the South Shore, to help kids curb drug abuse, alcohol abuse, and educate them on what's going on out there for drugs, and hopefully get them on the right track and form that relationship. For me, personally, after taking all that, as well as the Buckle Up Program, established with the Derby Shop, so forth and so on, and had the budgeting and grant coming from the state and local businesses, you need to get out there, look people genuinely in the eye, and that simple handshake that I utilized at the college, it goes a long way. And I have people mock me, peers, and say, "Don't do it. You're wasting your time." I'm in a busy environment. This is a busy, busy town. We have a lot of people coming through, not so much even residents. You have to be out there introducing yourself, just developing that rapport, going to the businesses, and again, don't be afraid to not have the answer. You know, I think, hit me with this card. Let me email you, or vice versa. So that's my thoughts on community policing.
Thank you. Can you describe for us what is the most difficult situation you've faced?
Um...
And what did you do?
This is probably too prolonged. I was born premature, and I was born premature, sorry, I'm not speaking up. Premature, and therefore being the case, I was hospitalized for a long period of time off and on, and I had to really be able to act myself to academics and work with two to work my mom and achieve that. But more recent, at Mass Bay Community College, I had a student who was accused of carrying a firearm. He was specifically a Techn-9 semi-automatic firearm on the campus. A student had seen him, branished it in some fashion, notified us, all agencies working together, we couldn't locate the party. I'm very good with scenarios, I'm good with faces, and low and behold, I see the kid, sorry, the student walk by me at a glance, and I'm thinking to myself, "Well, here I am in this uniform. He's here, so he's doing the right thing, he's getting educated, and he's probably not spooked to think anyone's on to him." So I thought to myself, "What can I do?" Reached out to my media supervisors, passed along the information, and then simply walked up to him, engaged in conversation. I gave a facade. I wasn't honest with them. I said that I didn't take the bus, and I want to know how the weather was, and introduced myself, shook his hand. "What's your name, sir?" "I'm sorry, I'm really bad with names," which is true. Forgot his name. I had a positive idea. I knew who he was, where he was from, what school he went to, and I could relate to it because I knew Boston. So I made sure the information I was giving was factual, so we didn't cause any alarm. I then worked for outside agencies that were better equipped to handle the matter, assisting them in taking him in custody, and I just carried that dialogue along. That's probably one of the most severe. He had 15 rounds, which ammunition, I think it was, plus one chamber. I don't know what his capability would have been or wouldn't have been, so.
Good. Thank you. Thank you for that.
I'm sorry if I'm speaking fast.
No, no, that's okay. No, no, no. Just make your seat. Doing fine.
Couple of my vices there.
We've all sat in that chair, don't...
No, no, I'm comfortable.
More than once.
Thank you.
Paul, would you?
How would you like to be remembered as a Hingham Police Officer, Anthony?
I would like to be remembered as a guy that was, I'm sorry, the person who was honest, you know, the person who went the extra mile to, who really cared, you know? I'd give 110% for anyone or anyone I work with in the community. Just the guy that's all around a great person and would do anything for anyone, and you know, like I said, there's no facade. This is me, and I'd like to, you know, learn more about the community.
I am what I am.
Yeah, period. This is it, you know? So, thank you.
Thank you. Irma?
How would you rate your communication skills and what have you done to improve them?
I would say my communication skills on a scale of 1 to 10 would be, sorry, probably be, I'd say a nine. I need to slow down at times and be conscientious of not mumbling, but I think my communication skills are phenomenal. I deal with 14,000 students from over 93 countries in which there's communication barriers, there's cultural norms to us that are different norms to them. I mean, a traffic stop, I've seen things that people put their hands on their head and think, "What are you doing? This is not a felony. You're not putting the hands out of the car. Is it... We are trained as a felony." "No, it's not." And they'll tell you, because I'm from Haiti or from wherever I'm from, in my country, it's a different manner. So communication skills with me are phenomenal. I try to keep the same melatonin, be conscientious of the verbiage I'm using, so we're not tricking someone, or they understand. There's no point if I'm dealing with you now and then you walk away and you have no clue what I said, you know? So I think they're, I have to say, I do really well in the Communication Department. But I'd like to finish it with, since you're on with me, some formal speech classes.
You talked about earlier the difficult situations that you faced, have you?
Yes.
And how do you handle stress? How do you deal with a stressful situation?
Truth, absolutely.
Yeah.
Country music, in the car, relax, you know? You know what it is? You know what it is? Truthfully, you always say, here in the police, the police law enforcement agency, there's a tide of whispering. I talk to my wife. You won't share information pertaining to a case, you know, but talk to her. You know, I don't bottle things up. Events, my wife. It may not be anyone else, but she's one of my best friends. Well, one of my best friends that's done the job, they can relate. You know, you get some time, utilize technology, utilize that Bluetooth, be safe, go home, talk to someone. Or, you know, I live here on the back, well, we're renting out now, but the back river. I go out there with my dog and a coffee from either Bird wings or, I'm sorry, I'm bad with names, too. That's one of my third, is dunks. And it's, there's nothing else like it. I mean, I love to cook. That's another thing. I love to cook. Give me a recipe, let me read a recipe. So my wife, that's my way to relax. I try not to let things get to me. At the end of the day, this is a job. It's one aspect of my life. My wife taught me that. I didn't really think of it as that. It's one aspect. It's irreplaceable. This job's replaceable. Do a T vestibility. Don't let the stuff, don't take it home with you. I mean, simple as that.
Good. Thank you. Paul?
I have a question, but before I ask that, I've got another one. Do you know any languages, even phrases, from some of the other countries that you encountered?
I don't. And here's where academics, being academic, the Constitution, I'm trying to learn. I always say, "Puquita español." I have a little bit of Spanish. My wife is Syrian Irish. I know a little bit of Arabic.
Syrian Irish?
Yeah, I know one word in Arabic, and it's not a bad word, but I don't want to say it. It sounds, but it's not. It means kiss, but I don't want to say it. Pronunciate it.
Here's the question I want to say.
Yes, sir.
What traits have you seen in police officers that you yourself do not want to adopt?
I think, lack of integrity, lack of loyalty. I've seen people get on an apartment, go through academy, do a couple of years, leave. I've seen guys, you know, pointing, actually, last night, I was dealing with what was believed to be a heroin overdose. The patient did come through, he was fine, but another agency really didn't handle this in the right manner. We were dealing with the kid, it was a medical agency, but it's kind of correlates where they were mocking this individual because he attempted to climb up a hill and he fell, and they pulled out and looked at the sand, and you could see the hill, and you could see his pop, you know, his handprints, and sat there and mocked the kid. While he's in possession of a hypodermic needle, I just thought, hypodermic needle, and I already probably had a bad day as it is. He's been cooperative with me. Don't make in front of this individual. You know, there's no need for that. I mean, and do not allow ever, and I've seen this as well, is people's personal views to get involved in a situation dealing investigation. You can't do that. You may want to, you may think, "I can't believe this person, this human being is sitting in front of me and did this." Cannot do that. Period. Keep your game face on, be neutral. And afterwards, you say, "I'm frustrated, I can't get over that," but I've seen people act and, you know, put their hands on someone. There's no need for that. Person's compliant.
Irma?
If you could describe yourself in three words, what would they be? If you could describe yourself in three words, what would they be?
I would say, honest. Honest, loyal, and I would have to say, I'm very hardworking. I don't think I give myself enough credit, I'm very hard on myself, but I'm very hardworking and giving everything 100%, so I'd say hardworking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kind of, last question. What made you interested in police work?
Growing up, I saw two sides of policing and, you know, one was, I kind of was jaded by it, but then as it came along, this was, this is perfect fit for me. I mean, ever since I can remember, this is what I wanted to do. I think, being involved in the community in a positive sense, I mean, you can change anything, it's just a matter of how bad you want to do that and be proactive about it. I think, as a kid, I saw a lot of good, too, you know, with officers coming, you know, going domestics and seeing good come out of the bad, you know? I think ever since I was a little kid, this is just what I wanted to do. You know, it's a challenging job, it changes, you never know what's going to happen. Day to day, things can change at a time of a dime. Yesterday evening, I thought I was leaving and all of a sudden, nothing happened. So I liked the idea that it's, you're not stuck behind a desk in an office, not tutored on, that's your thing.
Unless you're the chief or the deputy.
Correct. It's a constant, it's a challenging job. It's not one that most will do. You don't wake up and say you want to do it. For me, it's just instinctively, I feel like I have very good intuition, this was the right decision for me. And I've just worked really hard to try to achieve that goal. And I think I solidified it by working, doing last mention back in 2002 and really working with agencies, and I did Hull. And I've seen how your offices were, and I just, this is definitely where I want to be. I don't, I don't want to be jumping around, so.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that.
Sorry to be long-winded on that, I apologize.
No, 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 that's, that was a great answer. And anything else you'd like to add? We haven't asked you.
I just, I would like to thank you for the opportunity, you know, for having me in tonight. I can assure you, I mean, this is a long-time goal of mine, and I only want to pursue it and then continue on with my education and be the best, be the absolute best I can be at this job. I want my daughter to grow up in a safe, you know, close-knit community. And I see just, I live in Hingham, we have a condominium in Hingham Woods, and it's just, it's great. These people have grown up, born and raised in Hingham, and it's kind of a full circle, they're coming back. And I just think it's amazing. And now, looking between websites, talking to officers, this is what I want to do. This is a perfect place for me. And I sincerely mean that. There's no, like I said, no facade, but that's, that's all I have right now.
Oh, good.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for applying and thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you very much for your time, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Very much.
A banker.
Thanks, sir. Have a good evening, have a great weekend.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
You'll notice, Michael, we changed the seat. It's not as wired as the last one.
I noticed that. Would you like to trade?
You know, we thank you again for applying for this position, and perhaps you'd like to, we have a few questions as you know, but before we do, perhaps you'd like to introduce yourself to the folks at home with some opening comments.
Okay. My name is Michael Dunleavy, I'm 30 years old. I've always wanted to become a police officer, it was a childhood dream. As time went on, as I got older, I learned more and more about what happens in the police department. And, you know, I learned about different, different specialty jobs that some of the police officers have, you know, like detective, and everybody wants to be a detective, but, motorcycles and SWAT and whatnot. So, you know, as I come to learn more and more about some of that stuff, and as I grew up, you know, that stuff still sounds actually kind of fun, so, you know, so I went forward to go about doing this and worked in a couple of different towns doing some seasonal work. I also work here part-time as a special police officer. Been here since 2009, enjoy it very much. I have come to learn, I've come to meet a lot of the townspeople, a lot of business owners, so I think the place is great, and I'm here to move forward with this.
Okay, well, thank you. We have a few questions, as you know, so I'll start with Paul Healy. Paul?
Hi, Mike. No curveballs. Mike and I had a friendly but brief chat yesterday as I was leaving the City District Police Academy, he was there, so he gets that. My question to you, Mike, you know that I was once a Hingham police officer, so I consider this a very important appointment, perhaps one of the most important decisions I can make as a selectman in behalf of our residents. So with that in mind, my question is this, what is your bright line with respect to your own internal code of conduct that's independent of anything that might be imposed upon you by law or, you know, police department regulation? What's the line you don't cross inside?
Well, I want to stay honest. Honesty, integrity is very huge with becoming a police officer. If you throw, if you throw that out the window, you're basically, you can almost be, almost ineffective as a, in your career as a police officer. So you don't want to lose any credibility. Code of conduct, I'd say stay courteous to the people and maintain a good image in town.
Okay, thank you. Irma?
Michael, nice to see you again. And I have to add my, Mike's story. Mike, in his day job, over the summer, was bringing a car from Hull. Do you remember this? And was, I've got pictures. And was, was on top of the, no, this is a good story. No, 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 no. This is a family story. And was smart enough to recognize that the car he was bringing back from Hull that supposedly had already been hosed down and the fire had been put out, not exactly. So Mike pulled off into the bathing beach parking lot and was smart enough to call dispatch and the red trucks came and put the fire out. And Mike was really great about doing his special police officer thing, too, and helping even though he was in civilian clothes, so my compliments.
Yes. I actually, thank you for bringing that up. That actually showed on a smaller scale a little bit about what a police officer would do anyway. That was right about 5 o'clock in the evening, rush hour, Otis Street, coming around the road, well, not, well, the road is not Otis Street, but as it came around the rotary, I did notice that car had reignited and was in flames, but I also had to keep in mind that it was 5 o'clock traffic, and I just couldn't really stop that thing in the middle of the road.
It's a good thing you didn't.
So I said, I said to myself, well, you know, if I just pulled, you know, a couple hundred feet up into the parking lot, nobody's in there, you know, and it was probably one of the best places to pull in, radioed in from there and, you know, had the proper services dispatched.
It was quite the fire.
Oh, yes, it turned a lot of heads. Some people pointing at me, I was like, yep, I know.
Okay, here comes the question. In your opinion, what is the most important aspect of community policing in our community?
That's the interaction part. Without the interaction, you don't have too much community policing. You should, and to do that, you really should hop on a bicycle every now and then, or even hop out of the crews at downtown in the square, stop and talk to some of the business owners down there, just to, you know, hey, hello, how are you? As time goes on and you see these people regularly, you'll actually form a relationship or a partnership, if you will, you with that person so that, you know, if anything ever happens, that person may be a good source or reliable source of information in case, you know, they see something, you know, they see something, and, you know, you could go see them later on and get some information out of them.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. What is the most difficult situation you have faced, excluding the fire in the, at the bathing beach?
I could base this one as, while I was on duty once, I was on a detail right around Christmas time, Derby Street Shops, which is very busy, if you've never been there during the holiday season. The management, but the property management company, you know, hires a detail there for, for the holiday season, for parking, some, you know, enforcement, crosswalk enforcement and whatnot. But, you know, I was doing my beat down there and I was approached by regular shoppers, and they said, hey, there's some people fighting over there. And I said, well, okay, well, which way are they? You know, they're over there by calls, I said, okay. So I ran over and my position with the police department, I don't really respond to calls like that. It was basically a domestic call. There was a husband and wife fighting, they were yelling back and forth. There was a young, I wouldn't say young kid, but this kid was probably 13, 14 years old, special needs. He got, you know, he was a little upset at the situation, so I got there and actually saw three people yelling and screaming, and I had to try and figure out, well, who's who here? Because at first, I thought, when I first rolled up, I thought that, you know, the mother and the son were actually fighting when it was the mother actually trying to hold the son down and from, you know, talking to the father that had done something, I don't remember what it was. But meanwhile, the father, who was the other subject in this, in this call, he was trying to walk away from the whole call, and at the same time, I'm trying to chase him down and radio in for some help. So there were a lot of things going on at once. I got probably like a tunnel vision, if you will. I wasn't too aware of some of my surroundings, which I probably should have been, but experience on the street will actually come with that. So I'd say that was a pretty sticky situation, if you will.
Good, thank you. Paul?
How would you like to be remembered as a Hingham police officer?
I would love to be remembered as a Hingham police officer.
But how?
How?
What way? What's your mark? What mark would you leave on this town as a Hingham PO?
The position I'm in now as a special officer is actually, most of the specials are made up of the retired guys. And I would like to be that guy who does a career here, stays here the whole time, and be remembered as almost like a brick in the wall. You know, you have some of the, some of the older guys, I don't know if I should mention any names, but you know who they are, that have been around a long time. And, you know, they're just kind of remembered as that, that person who's happy-go-lucky and, and finished out a career here.
Okay, good. Irma?
How would you rate your communication skills and what have you done to improve them?
On a scale of 1 to 10, I'd say 7. All right? You know, trying to improve them, I, you know, I focus a little more on making some eye contact, you know, watching some, you know, bodily, bodily controls and, you know, try and read people some more.
Thank you.
Okay. How do you, how do you deal with stressful situations? How do you deal with stress?
Just do it. Not like this. Well, I'm relatively young, so I wouldn't say I've really been in a, in a huge stressful situation. As I read more and more in the, in the police field, it can be a stressful job, and the way to deal with it, you know, is basically clear in your mind, time off. Exposing yourself to other stressful situations really doesn't help it.
I think we have time for one more question. Mr. Healy?
Sure. This is, this is the hard one. What traits do you see in other police officers, and I don't want names, that you yourself would not want to adopt?
Not doing your job description. I've seen police officers in other towns.
Good answer.
Basically cut corners. You know, not doing what they're supposed to, where they could administrative, you know, seek administrative action from the department, or, or even cut corners with carrying out their job and prosecuting crimes. You know, if they don't, you know, if they don't follow through with, with some of these cases, they probably won't get a conviction.
Good. Irma?
If you could describe yourself in three words, what would they be?
Funny, honest, and caring.
Good.
Nice.
Thank you.
Nice.
You know, what, what got you interested in police work? You told us a little bit in your introduction, but...
I'd say, it started off as the childhood dream, which most people have. As people grow older, it may wear off, but it has not for me. Like I say, I looked into more and more what they do and have an appreciation for that. One of the biggest things that excites me as far as police work is, is the motorcycles. I'm a Harley rider. I do fundraising bike runs with police officers that escort, and it's phenomenal, some of these motorcycle officers, that, you know, they basically take charge of the road so that motorcycle run can go through. And I mean, I think that's just amazing. I mean, that's great, you know? And I'd like to be there someday. Definitely would like to ride the bike. That would be a form of taking my hobby and bringing it to the workplace.
Good answer, okay. Is there anything else you'd like to tell us that we haven't brought forward?
Yes. As you know, I was here before, and, you know, I feel that I'm doing better as far as the interview process goes. So basically, whatever your decision is in the selection process, I can still walk out of here knowing that, that every time I do this, I actually do get better.
Good. Well, thank you for that.
And I feel a lot better about it, too.
Good. Very good. Thank you, thank you, Michael.
You're welcome, sir. Thank you. It's good to see you again, Mr. Healy. Good to talk to you.
Good to see you, Michael.
Nice to see you. Good job. Good to see you.
This is Kennedy Patrick Sharp. Nice to meet you.
Sheriff?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Patrick, nice to meet you.
See you again.
Have a seat.
Sure.
Get yourself comfortable. You won't need a doctor after this interview.
Okay.
It'll all be okay. As you know, what we'll do, we'll be asking you a series of questions.
Sure.
But before we do that, perhaps you'd like to tell us and the town a little bit about yourself.
Okay. I'm 34 years old, currently live on High Street right now with my girlfriend Rebecca, who's a lifelong resident of Hingham. I grew up in Yarmouth, Maine, which is a small coastal town similar to this. Moved to Massachusetts freshman in high school, went to college at Salva Regina in Newport Island, and lived in the North End for eight years, and I've been living here for three and a half years.
Great, okay, thank you. Well, as I said, we have some questions to ask you, and we'll just kind of go around the table, so Paul, if you'd be so kind.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Sheriff. My name is Paul Healy. Before I was a selectman, I was something else, and that something else was a Hingham police officer. And as I've said to the other three candidates for this position, I consider this a very important position, perhaps one of the most important decisions I make. Sir, what's, what's your bright line with respect to your own internal code of conduct, independent of any kind of rules or laws that are imposed externally upon you?
Well, I try to treat others how I'd like to be treated. I'm an extremely honest person. I'm dependable, flexible, and those are just some of the rules that I try to live my life by. I'm always trying to improve as a person, I reflect daily on decisions I've made or circumstances that have happened, what I could have done differently, or what I will do differently in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Irma?
Thank you for applying.
Thank you.
In your opinion, what is the most important aspect of community policing?
Thank you. Irma?
Thank you for applying.
Thank you.
In your opinion, what is the most important aspect of community policing in our town?
Community policing, I would say is very important. You need an open communications with the community. You need to work with them and what their needs are, and also what the department's needs are, whether it be different departments in the town, or just citizens, or travelers coming in and out of town. Everybody that comes through this town or lives in this town needs to, you know, be involved with what the department's doing.
Okay, thank you for that. What is the most difficult position or situation you've found yourself in, and how did you deal with it?
The most difficult situation, probably just, I was a police dispatcher when I first got out of college in Shrewsbury, Mass. Just learning how to prioritize situations, answering emergency phone calls, dispatching officers and patrolmen to, you know, different areas, knowing where they were. And you're just kind of a crucial focal point for the department. Such a young age, it was, it was a unique position to be in, but it was also taught me a lot about life.
So you had to learn fast.
Absolutely.
Okay. Paul?
How would you like to be remembered as a Hingham police officer, should you be selected to serve as such?
I'd love to be remembered as a long career, a friendly person who served the community well, enforced the laws when they needed to be enforced, was also an active member of the community, different organizations, and an outdoor enthusiast, and a, and a sports fan that was well-liked.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Irma?
How would you rate your communication skills and what have you done to improve them?
I would say my communication skills are fair. I like to believe that I can hold conversations pretty well. I'm a little shy at times towards newer people. I'd like to improve my public speaking abilities in situations like this. They aren't, they're far and few between, with the exception of work. So just more approachable in public settings, and I'd like to, you know, listen to people more often than...
Thank you.
Thank you. So you kind of hinted at the next question. How do you deal with stress?
Stress? Oh, there's a lot of different ways. I enjoy playing hockey, you know, once a week.
So a hockey puck gets it.
Yeah. Golf, or even the outdoors, walking around the area, Wampanoag State Park, Bear Cove. We have a couple of dogs. Usually, any outdoor activity, we usually do it, or just, you know, taking a half an hour and sitting outside and relaxing, or, you know, walking outside of a room if you're stressed out with the environment, what's going on, you know.
Okay.
Different ways.
Good. Okay, Paul?
Mr. Sharp, what traits have you seen in police officers that you yourself would not want to adopt, should you be a police officer?
First of all, I have the respect for all police officers. They have a very important job. Occasionally, you see them doing something that maybe you wouldn't think they should be doing, but you don't know what position they're in at the time, whether it be on their phone at a detail, or it seems they've been sitting in an area for too long. But you never know if that's where they're supposed to be, or they're just relaxing a little bit too much.
So you wouldn't relax too much?
I try not to.
Okay. Irma?
If you could describe yourself in three words, what would they be?
I would say loving. People always say that I'm a good friend, I can listen, I care a lot about my friends and my family. Honest and just fun-loving, I would say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Can you tell us, what got you interested in police work?
Hi, that was my major. My major at Salva Regina was criminal justice. I don't have any family members that were ever involved in police work, so it was rare for me to pique an interest in it. And I started taking classes in college. I enjoyed it. Did a couple of internships while I was in college. I worked for the Public Defender's Office, as well as a youth detention center in Cranston, Rhode Island. I enjoyed what I got out of it, you know, dealing with people, learning about people, and I love working outside as well.
We've asked you a number of questions. Is there anything you'd like to add that we perhaps didn't ask you?
Uh, yeah. The expectations for new officers, what, what would they be as a selectman? What would you think are good qualities?
Well, I'll turn to the one who had to make the transition to my left and let him think about that.
The first thing that comes to mind is, I started as a police officer when I was 21. So that being said, I look for someone who's got maturity, someone who can work well with others, someone who can communicate, someone who listens, someone who has respect for the law, someone who has a, an appreciation of the community that he or she serves, and is committed to that mission without respite.
Sure.
At all times during your entire career. I want to see someone who's gung-ho, wants to advance, who's hungry, motivated.
Dedicated.
Hard-working, wants to stay current with the current state of the law.
Absolutely.
No question.
Thank you.
Irma, anything you want to add?
Well, I've never been a police officer. However, I have the greatest respect for the men and women that wear the uniforms. I think my expectations would be that you would find a mentor within the department.
Sure.
Somebody, and we have many, that's very, very well-respected, that could kind of teach you the ropes that maybe you're not going to find in a book. And then also that you reach out and meet the people in the community as you go about. They're pretty easy to meet. And that you understand and learn the culture of the town.
Great.
And then everything else Paul said.
Thank you for the advice.
I'll make, yeah, I'll make it simple. You answered some of the questions. Your first answer to Paul's question about honesty and self-improvement. People who do those things and continually do them, never stop, that's, those are the people who attain life successes, so...
Great.
If you do that, and if you do what Mike says, that'll, that's, that's the other thing. But that, you knew that already. I didn't have to tell you that. Well, thank you for coming in this evening, and we thank you for applying.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much. Thanks again.
Thank you. Thank you for the obstacle.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I think the obstacle was nice to meet you.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you. Well?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your service, as always. As you can see, we had four, we had four very good candidates, and I congratulate them all for coming. It would be our intention to take what we've learned tonight and digest it. And I think for the agenda, on October the 24th is our next meeting. Mr. Town Administrator, if you could put that on the agenda for us, we'll render our decision at that time. But that was, every time I go through this, you learn not only, don't worry about the next generation, they're doing just fine. So that's a, that's a good thing.
And there was some talent there today.
There was, you know, and the, you know, I've noticed, and you probably too, Irma, is the people who come in, one of the things when I was an interviewer for, for college applications, I used to ask, they used to say, "I want to be a doctor," or "I want to be a lawyer." And I'd say, "Did you ever work in a law firm in the summer? Or did you ever do, become a candy striper in a, in a hospital?" If they still call them that, I don't even know if they do. But the effort to go experience that, you know, so they tested, put their foot in the water, and all of them did. They all put their foot in the water. That's it. That's a good thing. Okay, a couple of weeks ago, we started the discussion on our selectmen goals and objectives. And I think in our package this evening, if I can find it, we, we have some, and I guess I'd like to ask the Town Administrator to maybe update us a little bit, if you have that sheet for us, Mr.?
Sure. Continue your package. So the board had five goals last year. The first one was the aquarium water study, and I think we, we know the progress so far of that. The Study Committee has worked diligently to develop their recommendations, presented to the board, and of course, the board is fully aware of the action they've taken in that regard. I expect that this will be, you know, one of your goals for consideration for this coming year, since we haven't completed the work and we're midstream. Tax relief, we've, the board has come up with a series of recommendations. They will go into play for this budget cycle, and the board will have to make decisions about continuity of that on a go-forward basis. Another goal was the support for the industrial development, development of the industrial park in South Hingham, and bringing in public services, public utilities to that area. That's ongoing, and we have some discussion for a comprehensive study committee to look into that. We had an ad hoc field study committee to identify the current and future demands on our fields, and we have some recommendations, suggestions for that, that we've begun working on with the DPW and the, and the Country Club, who've managed both of those resources together. And then we have asset management, which we have begun to bring in-house and have moved forward to incorporate this into the capital planning process. Those are the five that you've been working on, and I would say several of them will be ongoing. And what I'd like to do is suggest to you just a few, I'm sure you're probably mostly aware of them, but a few that, that I see as, as some of your higher items that you've been working on. Some might be considered short-term goals that will wrap up shortly, some of it may take a longer time. But I would propose three for you, which are the Route 3 A corridor. I know all of you have taken a great interest in that, and from a staff perspective, we'd like to get some direction as to whether or not you continue to have that as a high priority. The FEMA floodplain, we intend to bring to you a proposal on your, on your meeting date 24th for future funding of that. And again, we, you know, want to ask whether you'd like that incorporated into your goal structure. And then another one that we've been working on in, off and on throughout, or actually continually for the last several years, is enhanced citizen communication. What I mean by this is, this is the year we're going to be requesting funding to redo our, the town's webpage. It's 15 years old, and technology is, is moving beyond where we are. But also, we really have not used the electronic marketplace, social media, Facebook, Twitter, and others, to interact with our citizens, and that's how they're interacting, larger and larger. So if we want to make that communication, I would, I would suggest that we need to start thinking about how we can branch out into that area.
Okay, good. I think as I looked at the three suggestions that you put forth, each of us have a special interest in that, and I'll, maybe I'll just take the first one, and that's the enhanced citizen communication. I'm a person, I grew up in an age when, if, as my wife will attest, I leave a newspaper print all over the house, and, but that's me. And what I know is my children communicate more effectively and more frequently with the, as you call it, social media venues of mobile and wireless communication, but also all of the iPads. So clearly, there's things going on in the marketplace that say the traditional ways of communicating, which we will continue, they need to be enhanced. And how do we do that? And perhaps as we get into the website discussion, that's one way. But there may be other ways in which specific targets can, can be helped. So I would endorse that. And I know, Irma, you've done a lot of work on the, research on the FEMA floodplain, and you've become very familiar with that. So that's a big issue, I would assume.
Extremely, but I would agree with you on the enhanced citizen communication, but I'd like to redefine the goal, that I think we need to look at a town-wide technology plan that incorporates the enhanced citizen communication. Because you're right, people are doing everything now from paper all the way up to, and the younger generation, I'm afraid, isn't going to really know what paper is, because they don't carry money, rarely. So it's a whole new world, and it would be very nice for us to get out in front of it, to not only have, because we're very lucky, we have H-CAM. I don't think we use it as broadly as we could. A new webpage would be fabulous, a lot, a lot. Some towns have already gone forward and redone their webpages, and they're pretty cool. And the use of Facebook and Twitter is becoming much, as you said, very, very prevalent. But also within the town and within the town's buildings. You want to bring this whole thing together and come up with a technology plan, because right now, we have two fabulous IT people, Kate and Steve, but they do firefighting more than anything. And it would be nice if they could take a breather, or we could bring somebody in to look at all of this.
You know, that, you hit the nail right on the head, Irma. You know, as I, Steve won't be watching this, but he might watch it tomorrow. I'm not putting this on Steve and Kate's plate and say, "Here, help us enhance communication." They've provided us with the platform that we need. Now we need to take that platform and start opening it up and communicating that dialogue, and that is not the role of IT. You know, I think that's the role of management, and whatever structure of management we want to create to do that. When we, when we started the webpage, we asked IT, and really, the reason we created Kate Richardson's position was to have her go out to departments and draw that information out so we could communicate it with the public. I know that, Irma, you remember when you were on advisory, and Jack Manning started us moving into that direction. And we started to see very clearly that, as you indicated, IT does not have the resources, or really the background to take, take that next step. That's not what they're for. They're here to maintain our backbone, technical, you know, term in the accounting, in the, in the IT world, but, you know, we, we use our electronic capabilities to do everything. All, all of our communications, our phone and our computers are all driven through our IT department now, townwide. And so that really, I'm very judicious about adding more work to them, because, you know, phones don't go, phones don't work, we don't work.
And you need somebody to step above it and look at all of the technology, and then working with the communications with the light plant and all the other different segments of the town. So I think this is a good one, but if you don't mind my flipping the terminology.
No, 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 I think that's, that's well said. I have to tell a story, because to tell you how we all catch up, I have a grandson. I have two of them and two granddaughters, but the grandson that's the youngest is going through, and I think I can say this on television, is going through toilet training.
You're safe.
And those of us who have nephews, nieces, or others who've been through it, my daughter was struggling with how to get my grandson inspired to, to become toilet-trained, and I knew, to your point, I had missed something. And the carrot that was offered was not you get to go to a movie, or you get a new toy. No, it was nothing like that. He turned to his mother and he said, "Mommy, I'll go to the bathroom if you give me an iPad."
Extortion.
Which is extortion.
It works.
But I have to tell you that he now, he, he gets it for 15 minutes, and, and you can guess where he uses it. But that's, that was the incentive. And it works. And I said, "The light bulb, the younger generation is, to your point, right? They're in it." And those of us who grew up in a different world have a different experience.
That's what I want when he does chores.
I don't know, but I'm going to stand right behind him, and that Mercedes is looking better and better. But anyway, I just, it is, it's symptomatic of the time, and, and the issue is our, as you said, Ted, we need to catch up with it. And Irma, you're right, there's, it's a comprehensive approach. The other issue that Ted raised up was the 3A corridor. And I know, Paul, you've, both from your traffic committee days and recently at a number of meetings that we've had, this is an issue that we can't do a lot of the other things we want to do until we get this resolved.
That's clearly a linchpin for a lot of the development, not just, you know, in the harbor area. It's been under discussion recently, but all along 3A. And we invested a great deal of energy and effort on the shipyard, and we tend to develop it, or improve it, or reconstruct it in pieces. To, to address that definitively as a whole would be a very ambitious undertaking, but at some point, that's got to start. I mean, the volume is just, it's continuing to grow. We've got a, you know, an issue with respect to the rotary. We have no idea what the state will ultimately do. I've read that report that they issued, and it, without characterizing it in any way, just seemed that there were some short-term... We have no idea what the state will ultimately do. I've read that report that they issued, and it, without characterizing it in any way, just seemed that there were some short-term fixes proposed, but the real big one was just kind of described and then moved on. That's something I think that is going to take some economic energy to develop.
Yeah, I think you're absolutely right. And it's cohesive and comprehensive. I'll share with you, something unique is about to happen Thursday night. And the reason I'm not here this Thursday is the chairman of the selectmen from the neighboring towns are going to get together to discuss common issues. And this is one of those common issues that our friends in Holland are interested in. So it is something that, it's not just for us, there are other people involved as, as well. Are there any other comments or other goals that you want to put out on the table?
I'd like to add something to the asset management one, because this is a work in progress. And at the fall MMA meeting, this past Saturday, was it this Saturday, the Saturday before, one of the presentations that was given, was given by Charles Foskett from Arlington. And they are doing really a mammoth job with capital planning. One of the things in listening to him, and I've shared the presentation he made, the paper copy of it with my colleagues and Ted, I, one of the things I'd like to see extended for asset management is that we do review all of our town-owned buildings to see what their disposition should be. Should we, the Tree and Park Barn, the old DPW building, the red brick building on Hershey Street, and see if we can't either find a use for them, or find a way to move them into private hands, and have that as part of asset management? Because it may be much more expensive if we don't have a use for something, much more expensive to maintain it, or redo it, and then have it sit there with nothing.
Okay, good point. Okay. Paul, anything else you'd like to?
My, my interest at this point is known to each of you. I'm focused on South Hingham, Derby Street Corridor, and the industrial park, and the Bristol property. So that's where I'm devoting some energy, and hopefully will produce something of consequence.
All right. Okay.
Are we going to continue tax relief, I hope?
Yes, yeah, I think, yeah. I think what, I mean, I'd like to, the aquarium water study, there's something we'll discuss in selectmen reports that I want to share with you. You know, I think that what, Paul, what you said about the South Hingham development is part of the ongoing goal that Ted recorded, our number, our number three. And, you know, I think those added too, and I think, Irma, your comments on asset management will incorporate that. So maybe as a path forward to finalize this, Ted, perhaps you can put our comments together and give us, if you will, the ongoing goals that we've discussed, and then these additional short-term objective goals that we need to deal with this year.
Okay. And by no means is this list meant to be comprehensive of what we will work on.
Right.
You know, a month ago, we weren't working on FEMA. Now we are. So this is really, this exercise is to try to, there's a limit of resources that we have available to us time in the day. You know, we do sleep sometimes.
It's a private joke. I challenge Ted now and then, because when he says he's got this, this, and this, then I say to him, did you sleep? So he reminds me of that challenge that I give him.
So we, we want to make sure that everybody in the organization is following through with what the goals of the board are, and so that's what we try to do here. And I see a mix of, you know, long-term goals that will continue on probably for several years, and some shorter-term goals that, you know, are great ideas that we will incorporate into our everyday. So, you know, for example, if we drop a part of asset management off the goal, it's, it's because, it's now part of the ongoing process. We do it all the time. If we drop off tax relief, it's because we've incorporated into the day-to-day affairs. I don't think we're there yet with that. But, you know, each of these, floodplain, you know, that'll be a goal this year, and hopefully next year, it'll be part of our regular operations. So I wanted to give you that context of that.
On tax relief, could we just add a comment, and I'll throw this out for the two of you, that maybe we can concentrate on for our more senior people on fixed income, not necessarily. We have very good targeted programs now for lower income, but for all seniors. Is there a way that we can help them out a little more, so that we don't continually lose them from town?
Fixed income solution, if you will.
Yeah, but not, not like a money type of the lower income that we do now, but the seniors, well, like you and I.
Yeah. It's a good example. Yeah, I can, I can relate to that. Nothing like having a goal that you benefit from. And, and I'm hearing from, in the audience, that not just seniors. No, that's exactly, exactly right. What are the, what are the opportunities that we could do? Interesting, and the tax classification, and if you haven't read the Hingham Journal this week, there was a very good article that, on that subject. But it, as I mentioned last time, there are other things we could do, and that's the good point that you make, is let's, let's, let's look at the whole spectrum, and it's not just a grandiose goal, but perhaps targeted ones that will give the relief where it'll do the best. So now that we've said all that, Paul, do you have anything else you want to add, or Irma?
You know, I think the plate's fairly well.
Oh, okay.
I'll look forward to Ted's write-up.
I'll have it for you in your next meeting.
Okay, that's very good. Let me see. In the, the next item on the agenda has to do with some liquor license fees. And the reason, as you know, from time to time, we look at our fee structures and try to make upward and downward adjustments to make sure we're consistent. You know, one of the things that we got in the tax classification work was a comment from Peter Forman, the head of the South Shore Chamber of Commerce, is all of our other towns are doing the same thing, looking at what they charge for services. And to be very frank, we are in competition with the other towns, and we want to attract businesses, and we want to be sure that, that what we're doing is not overcharging, but at the same time, that we're not undercharging in an area where we could be. So thanks to some very good work that Sharon did for us, and I thank her publicly for that, she did this on her own. She took a look at our, in preparation for the annual license renewal, that comes, that's coming up by November, if I'm right, Betty, that we have. So I asked Ted if he would just educate us a little bit, and he put a spreadsheet, which unfortunately, you folks don't, at home, don't have it in front of you. But maybe you could just, Bob, if you could put this on the screen.
Let me put this one on, this is the summary on the back page. Maybe it's easier to see.
I don't know if you can see that, Bob, if the folks at home can see that.
Sharon, excellent job. Who knew you were a master of Excel? This is really good.
Yeah. So you can see, as with any fee categorization, they're, they cover a variety of events. And, you know, all the way from an all liquor, all alcohol license at a restaurant, to a, to a one-day charity event license. There are things that people get charged for these events. So maybe, Ted, you could share with us, or Betty, I think we'd probably be better equipped to, to talk a little bit about the analysis that you've done, and what did you find?
What Sharon did was she polled all of our 19 comparable towns and checked on each category and what, what they charge for a particular license, for example, restaurant all alcoholic. And the average on that particular license right now, across the 19 towns, is a little over $2,700. Town of Hingham is currently charging $2,000. And she went through that exercise on each one of the licenses, just to see where we stood compared to our peers.
Okay. And is that the, that's the major one in the, and there are 26 potential establishments?
There are 26 all-alcoholic common visual licenses.
Okay. And Ted, the recommendation of the staff would be?
So again, I want to publicly thank Sharon. She, and I asked her to look into this. I did not expect such a thorough product. It was really nice to see that, that work product. And actually, something that I will be incorporating in other things, I've used averages a lot, but the high and low, it was really helpful to look at this, along with the, you know, along with the number of establishments, and then the projected revenue increase if we were to, to make a change. And so that helps you, when you look through these, these items, that, you know, we could be a little off on some of them, but when you only have four licenses, or one license, it doesn't really change our, our bottom line very much. And then I tried to tie some of these things to where our, our costs are coming out based upon this. And so I only have one recommendation for you. I would recommend that you actually not vote this tonight, but consider it and put this out into the public, so that the 26 establishments, and if you do agree, we'll communicate with them, so they know for the next meeting. But I'd recommend that you increase the all-alcoholic restaurant licenses from 2,000 to 4,000. That's a fairly steep increase, I do understand that. But it also is tied to a fairly strong revenue producer for the establishments. It hasn't been changed in seven years, this will be the eighth year, when we go into the next fiscal year, or the eighth fiscal year. And the amount of revenue generated from that will allow us to put another officer on the street. As you know, one of the initiatives that I've talked to you about this year is to add at least two more officers to the patrol base, because the town is starting to feel the effects of its growth. We have a fairly large restaurant establishment. They're great restaurants, as you know, from our meal stacks, but when you serve alcohol in a facility, things can happen. And we, we have the shipyard on one side of the town, and all the way on the other side of the town, we have, you know, restaurants along Route 53. You approved a liquor license just last week for a transfer for one on Route 53. Again, all great establishments with great track records, but things happen in these situations. And if they do, I was talking with the police chief, how long would it take, you know, backup to come from one part of the town to the shipyard, and simultaneously, if we had to deal with closing hours on the other side of town? And I think we, we need to address that. We've seen some security issues. We've had the incident in Linden Ponds a few weeks ago. So coverage is, issues are starting to become a concern for me.
Okay. Okay. Any questions, Paul or Irma?
No, ditto. Nice job, Ted.
No, good. So that is the one change to the liquor license renewal process. And as Ted mentioned, our intent would be to open it up for public comment. And since we're obligated to publish this by November 1st, that, that comment period will be the next two weeks. October 24th is our next meeting. So we would welcome any comments, positive or negative, and if there's anything we missed in the analysis, we'd like to hear that from the public.
And we'll actually send a letter to each of the 26 establishments, letting them know, I know you've announced it, but just in case they're not listening, we want to make it clear that they understand what we're doing, and they have an opportunity to comment.
One piece of information to add, the high and the low, because I'm sure that everybody could read all those numbers, I can barely read them. The high for the all-alcoholic is $5,000, and we're only going to four. And if you look across the different towns, the towns that are more like us, that are very heavy with eating establishments, are much closer to the 5,000 than the low of 1,500.
Yes.
So it's, we look for everybody's comments.
That's good, 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 and good point, Irma.
Just, who would like the comments, like, I'll put it in the paper for next week, but who would you like the comments to be made to, and who should they get in touch with, and who do you want to hear from?
Selectmen's office.
The selectmen's office.
Do you want to hear from citizens about this?
Well, we could hear citizens as well, but particularly the 26 establishments that would be impacted by it.
But comments particularly about the idea of raising it $2,000?
Yeah. Yeah. And I think Irma's point was very well made, that when you, and you have a copy of the chart, I think. This is Carol Meyer from the Hingham Journal. I think, you see, there is, we try to be consistent, and we try to do that in many of our activities, to make sure that we're not too far out of line with that. Okay. Before we go to selectmen reports, town administrator, we have a couple of votes this evening. We have a, yes.
Okay, that's at the very bottom.
Yeah, we have that one. The first is, Mr. Healy has gotten a group together of folks to deal with that South Hingham Study Group, and this is just at a study group. It will consist of elected and appointed officials, as well as some staff members that would be helpful to us. So Paul, since this is yours, you can vote for yourself, that's, that's a lie. So if you would.
Sure. I'd just like to, before we do the formal vote, I'd just like to thank the citizens that did respond with unexpected interest, frankly. It's, it's gratifying to see that kind of interest in the future of the town, in such an important area. And the people that are sitting in this committee, I've worked with in the past on planning and development issues of serious consequence, and I'm very, very pleased and honored and feel privileged to be working with each and every one of them there. They're very bright, motivated, dedicated citizens, and we're lucky to have them step forward. So with that, I'd move to appoint the following members to the South Hingham Study Group. Judith Sneeth, Planning Board Representative, Todd McGrath, ZBA Representative, myself as the Selectman Representative, Susan Sullivan, Development and Industrial Commission, and Richard Cook, at-large citizen, traffic engineer extraordinaire.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We have two other votes, appointments to make, and where, and it has to do with the Veterans Council. And as you know, this is a group that not only works hard at certain times of the year, specifically for holidays and memorial commemorative events, but it's another way of recognizing those people who have, and there are many of them in this town, as you know, who have served us in a number of great ways. One of the things we have observed, and it's my colleague, Paul Healy, who brought this to Ted's attention and Ted to me, is there are, as we all unfortunately know, a number of younger committee member, citizens who have just returned from service. And we'd like to encourage them to join with us, as well as to encourage people of all diverse backgrounds to participate in this, because the more we represent the makeup of the town, the better a group like this can serve all of the needs of the citizens. So I encourage those of you who would be interested in serving on the Veterans Council to make your desires known to us. So with that, Irma, if you would.
Gladly. I'd make a motion to appoint Charles Y. Chittick Jr. to the Veterans Council to fill an expired term ending in 2015.
Before I second that, I would just like to add to the chair's comments. I, I encourage, solicit, and hope that men and women who have served this country and now live in Hingham, consider the invitation that's just been extended. I believe strongly that the social issues that affect veterans is something that is of enormous importance in today's world. And the Veterans Agency is not just there to send us emails on to when to raise the flag at half-staff, or certain commemorative events, but to serve the veterans that are returning and integrating back into society. And I think that that's a position that the Veterans Council should bring some serious energy to. And for that reason, I would encourage female veterans in particular, I don't know what the composition of the existing Veterans Council is, but unless there's a female veteran sitting on that council, I'd be surprised. So with that having been said, I'll second the motion made by Ms. Lotter.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And thank you. Paul, you said it better than I did.
Just different.
If you would be kind enough to make the next motion.
Sure. I'll move to appoint Robert Gibbs. I'll move to appoint Robert Gibbs to the Veterans Council for three, a term ending in 2016.
Second.
Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Mr., Ted, could you, Mr. Ted, 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 Mr. Ted, that's it, Mr. Alexiattis, we have a reserve fund transfer, perhaps you could.
You have a reserve fund transfer for auditing services, in the amount of $7,500, and this is not in conjunction with the regular audit, but we had some additional audit work done, and we, we're not going to be able to make that up with the audit budget, the audit budget's very tight.
Yeah, I.
The audit budget is tied directly to the annual audit, so the numbers are tied perfect.
I understand, this was a unique situation, which the three of us are aware of, and before it was conducted, we so advised Ted to proceed. So, Mr. Healy, would you?
Sure. I'll move to recommend a transfer from the Reserve Fund to Accounting Auditing Services in the amount of $7,500, dated October 9th, 2013.
Second.
Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, very good. Ted, any other administrative reports that you'd like to?
I'll just briefly let you all know that we have received a proposal for, for engineering services relative to, to the FEMA flood map plan designs, reasonable proposal, I've had community planning reviewing it, and we will be back to you for the meeting on the 24th, for a request for reserve fund transfer to proceed with, with the reserve fund. The one question I wanted to ask you is whether or not you might be willing to consider a meeting next week at some point in time, because the advisory committee's meeting the 22nd, and they won't be meeting again until mid to late November, as I understand it. And I would like to get to them the following, you know, shortly the following period, we could still give you an update on the 24th of where we are with FEMA, but the residents have been calling regularly and are anxious to see if we're ready to go forward. So that's an update that I have for you on FEMA.
Okay, so you need us to decide our availability, and there may be a meeting, you're suggesting we get together briefly to discuss this, is that correct?
Correct. At least allow us to go forward with the reserve fund transfer request to get the engineering work done. You know, what we're all working against is an October 1, 2014 deadline, when the new implementation of the insurance rates go in, and so not only do we have to do the data to see where we are in terms of elevations and, and the oceanographic scientific information, but we then have to take our case to Washington, and if they open up again, we will have someone to talk to, and that's going to be a long conversation. And for those of you, I know you, all of you on the board at some point in time have worked in that capacity, it's not easy getting their attention.
And this is serious, because there was an article in the Patriot Ledger, and I can't remember whether it was Situate or Marshfield, but someone has just, a homeowner, has just gotten a bill for $64,500 for flood insurance. Do you remember what town it was? It was Situate, and that's kind of like right next door.
So, we're also going to have for you on the 24th, what we believe the impact will be on us as an organization directly, we do own waterfront property, and how those, although we don't participate in the flood insurance in the same fashion, it does affect our insurance rates in other ways, and so we're going to explore that and see exactly what that means to us as an entity. And the other thing I wanted to mention to you was, I had the pleasure of speaking to Linden Ponds on Tuesday night, they had a small gathering of about 300 to listen to State of the Town from myself, and it was a wonderful exchange, and they brought up a number of issues, many of which relate to your goals.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Irma, any?
Just one thing, I want to, actually, two. I want to thank Barbara Farnsworth and her team for an excellent volunteer luncheon for elder services, some 170 people volunteer, I think I've got the number right, it's a huge number, it's slightly under 200, and they can always use a few more. We're recognized as volunteers for our elder services population, so it was great, it was at Black Rock Country Club, and we did all see the goats that were eating the poison ivy, serious, and the weeds, very near the parking lot.
Oh, dear.
And Saturday was the Fall MMA Conference down in Franklin, so I finally know where Franklin is, it's not around the corner. There were a number of presentations, one all single out, we talked about the Capitol Outlay one, they had the Watertown Police Chief and a member of, and he was like a vice superintendent, I can't remember his exact title, talking about the events of the Boston Marathon, and it was quite riveting, it was stuff that you didn't see in the press, and their big push was to tell the selectmen and everybody there to please plan training time for your first responders, because you just never know when you're going to need it. So they were supposed to talk for 20 minutes, after an hour and something, they finally had to stop, because they had promised everybody only half a day, and honestly, all of us could have stayed there a few more hours.
Those are great events.
Oh, unbelievable.
Good, well, thank you, thank you for that. That's a good reminder, too, and I know that's important to our management in the responding departments, so. Mr. Healy?
Yes, I was fortunate enough to be invited to speak at the Citizens Police Academy last night, where I met Mr. Dunley, he was there, but I have to say that it continues to make me feel pretty good that there's such strong interest on the part of our residents in the police mission, and if you haven't done that academy, I'd encourage you to consider doing it, because I think it gives you a good snapshot into the life of, you know, the police mission here in the town, and some of the issues that the police officers have to address and contend with. It's not easy work, but I think it's, as you perhaps picked up in the interviews here tonight, the support of the community is critical to its success, and I think that the more people understand it, the more likely it is to, to enhance the, the effort of the police officers on the street. You know, and it, from a, from a selfish perspective, it's, it's good to go back there and see some of my old pals, so if you haven't done it, give it some thought, and I think you might enjoy it.
That is, you're right, that, I think one of the more favorable things we do as selectmen is go to those events, and you learn.
The graduations.
Graduations are just terrific, and, and, you know, we're getting a, an adjunct body to help the police department in their work, and, and more importantly, the citizens get a better understanding of the work that they do, so that's a good comment, thank you for that, Paul. I have, I have one issue I want to bring to the board's attention, and the public's. On October 22nd, as you know, we filed as a town, on July 3rd, to ask the courts to decide what is the price of the, that Hingham should pay for the water company, and the way they should be properly stated is, the price we are trying to seek is what did Aquarian pay for the water company when they bought it from Kelda, and we've asked, we've asked the courts to intervene in that. In the course of that review, we've had discussions with our state representatives, and one of the issues that has come up is the fact that under the current procedure in the Department of Public Utilities, is that if, if a utility incurs an expense, they are entitled to receive recompense from the ratepayers of that utility for that expense. And while for most part, that would have seemed, assumed to be a reasonable request for things like they have to buy trucks, and they have to buy, pay workers, et cetera, there was one area that came up, and I think this may remind folks of something, when we voted to study the water company, all those postcards that were issued to us prior to the town meeting vote in 2012, we paid for, it was in the rate base. In addition, what we paid for was the attorney fees associated with their discussions with us, as well as any future discussions they may have in a court of law. On October 22nd, we start that judicial process when we appear with Aquarian in, in the Suffolk Superior Court, and those attorneys' fees, as I said, would be, would be paid for by the ratepayers. So let me make it simple, we sue the water company to get a price, and we not only pay for our attorneys, we pay for their attorneys. Under the DPU guidelines, that is the way it works. We think this may be an exception in this particular case to ask the ratepayer to pay for an expense to protect the shareowner of Aquarian. So I have put forth for my colleagues comments and a letter that was composed by our town litigator, to ask the state to reconsider that rule, because I'll share a figure with you, in the last rate case for Hingham, Aquarian had requested that the $500,000 that the town of Oxford expended, or that Aquarian, correction, that Aquarian expended to defend itself from a suit by the town of Oxford, they were asking the Hingham ratepayer to pay for it. The DPU disallowed half of that amount, and only charged us $260,000 in the rate case. So 260 divided by about 7,000 homes, that tells you how much each home paid for Oxford, Oxford lawsuit against Aquarian. I, having worked in the utility business, I understand there are some expenses which are legitimately borne by the ratepayer. This is one where I think paying yourself when you sue the opposition just doesn't make legal sense to me. So I can't change the law, nor can this board change the law, but we can suggest a change in the, in the guidelines to the state for future consideration. Whether it would have any impact, I don't know in this case, but it certainly, we should raise it to the attention of, of our state legislature, so.
Certainly, the state has the ability to, and they do this in numerous areas, where they consider certain expenses ineligible, and I think that's what you're really referring to, is that, you know, the litigation expenses of Maguari Bank and Aquarian to defend their right to, to stay, is separate from operation and maintenance of the facility, which I think everyone would agree that, of course, the ratepayer should pay that, and there's the, the little bit of the rub.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that. I don't know if either of you have any public comments you'd like to make on it, I, I know Irma and I both have been in the, on the other side of the fence, and we know this is an issue that Sharon is, get concerned about, but, and they should, but this is one where I don't think the ratepayer should be paying both sides of the argument, that's kind of my opinion.
Well said.
So I would assume this letter will, I don't know, we'll sign it after this evening at our usual time. And any other comments or points that we missed this evening? Okay. Therefore, I'd like to recommend that the board enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing contract negotiations with the town accountant and the police chief. The board will not resume open session this evening, and our next meeting, by the way, will be October 24th, as you heard. Mr. Healy?
Aye.
Ms. Lauter?
Aye.
Mr. Ruffo?
Aye.
And with that, we'll wish you all a very good evening, and have a safe Columbus Day weekend.
You, too.